Call this meeting in order to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Johnson.
Here.
Johnson, Peter Frosto. From the absence, Balahto. Balahto Robinson. Viera.
Here.
Viera here. Rita. Rita absent. Dunn here. Dunn here, absent. Holly.
Here.
Holly here. Fernwald.
Here.
Fernwald here. Ossling.
Here.
Ossling here. Thompson.
Here.
Thompson here. Carter.
Here.
Carter here. Pittman.
Here.
Pittman here. Slattery.
Here.
Slattery here. Pulos.
Here.
Pulos here. Ten eyes, your honor.
Thank you much. Presentation adjourned proceedings. I need a motion to approve the city minutes for the date of April the 25th, 2017, and for the date of May the 9th, 2017. Got a motion by Alderman Viera for both. Second by Alderman Carr. Any questions?
Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you much. Counsel?
You are all welcome to tonight's meeting. You are politely reminded the purpose of the meeting is for the deliberation of the city council and the mayor regarding city governance and business. If you intend to speak, please once recognized by the mayor approach the podium, announce your name and address. Please be further advised. Comments may be limited to three minutes or forwarded to the appropriate city personnel for follow-up.
Thank you much. Anyone? Sir, when you come up, I just need your name and address. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Trent. My address is 21861 West Nolan Drive in Plainfield. I bet you're wondering what I'm doing here. But I've been do outreach director at Oak Street Health, which is in Blue Island, and I just wanted to come by as a guest of Ms. Carr and wanted to welcome, say hello to all you nice constituents and saying I'm happy to be here and look forward to working in Blue Island. And just so I talk about, let me backtrack a little bit. I work from, at the Old Park location, and I work a lot with politicians and I realize the importance of what the things you bring to the community, and I want to bring what I brought from the Old Park to here. So I look forward to meeting all you individually at some point, and hopefully at some time I could possibly bring lunch for you all or early. Okay, bring something for you guys to eat after before this and just meet you guys formally. Just introduce myself and say hello and well, thank you, plenty of neighborhood. Okay?
Thank you very much. You're welcome. Anyone else? I'll need your name and address.
Hi, my name is Lisa and I own a business at 2406 Union Street.
Go ahead.
Okay, first I wanted to let you, thank you for letting me speak and congratulations to everybody on the reelection, and I'd also like to welcome the press. The reason I'm standing here today is over the years I've had many opportunities to come to Village Hall and for one reason or another to get a permit or a license or just to see what was going on. It was about four years ago, there was a drastic change in personnel there, and it was very disturbing to find out that many longtime Blue Island public resident workers were let go and some of them were near retirement. And it's been heard around the village, this close-knit village, this past week, that there's going to be another personnel change at Village Hall. Please let it be known that there are many residents and many business owners who will not take this move very lightly. We do not want our village residents who work at our village halls replaced by outsiders and employees that know all of us, that look out for all of us, and keep Blue Island the close-knit village that it is. To the aldermen who side with the Rita's plan to replace these citizens, your names will duly be noted. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Name is Thomas Madrigal Jr. I reside at 13427 Mole Town Street. Just like the other person said, I congratulate the people that won the election as far as the, you know, your honor, Carr and I and the other aldermen. Congratulations. And I'm here, I'll mention a few things. This Saturday, 27th, at Litton School, we're gonna have 10 o'clock a.m. Mexican-American memorial service. It's at 10 o'clock. It's only for about half hour, forty-five minutes. And this, the, I think the organization's been doing this, I think it's almost 40 years. Matter of fact, the mayor was, used to be in, you know, mess so many, so many people, and it's, you know, it's well-attended, so I invited everybody, if they could come, few minutes, come by, pay their respects, and afterwards you'll have, you know, refreshments and Mexican, foreign doors, you know, sweets. And also, I'd just like to mention that where I live at, a couple things are, there's a train, well, the train tracks over there are constantly, I don't know, I think these train cars are tanker cars come from there, are right behind where I live at, on 130th Street, and they're constantly blocking traffic, constantly, because I pick up my grandkids and do my chairs, and they're there for about half hour, forty-five minutes, just stalled. So I don't know what's, you know, or the regulations on that, so forth.
That's the last set of tracks heading west, correct?
Yes.
Leading into that side, this front?
Exactly.
Right.
I mean, they just, you can see a lot of emergency vehicles and buses, you know, always either way, they're, they're, for some reason, they stay there, I don't know why they, you know, take off rooms, but that's, that's, you know, you like to see what the city can do about it. And also, too, this past Sunday, I was waiting up in Michigan, a small town, and that town was about only two, three hundred people, and they had like this, looked like a garage warehouse, they converted to like a hall for weddings and stuff like that, events, and it was nice. And by the way out, a security guard, a nice guy, they were kind of mentioning about the sound decimals as far as noise sounds. I know where I live at, a lot of people, especially my Hispanic people, playing the loud music, and I don't know what's, after a certain hour, I always call police and the police come out, because I'm really thankful that, I don't know if there's a decimal or, because these people start playing music by six o'clock, and it's loud, you know, and I kept telling my wife, now, I'm not gonna wait till nine, ten o'clock, call police, I'm gonna call them, no, you know, you know, this ain't that issue, I tell these people. If you're in Mexico, that's a different story, but this is not United States of America, you know. But that's the only thing I have to say, and like I said, thank you very much for letting me come up and voice my, you know, as they see the Spanish, not here, has my complaints, so forth. Thank you, God bless you.
Mr. Madrigal, before you leave, again, as being yourself a veteran and all the veterans out here who are elected and in the audience and in Blue Island, I want to thank you for your service. Memorial Day is a day that we should, again, not only remember our soldiers on that day, but every day, and I thank you for your service to your country, to your city, but to humanity.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And thank you very much for having the Philadelphia flag.
You're welcome.
And that's, like I was talking about earlier, a lot of people don't know what hardship is, you know, I've seen it. I've seen it. And my grandparents and, and mayor's grandparents saw that in Mexico. We, we, we take our freedom of light, and look what happened in the U.K. last night. That can happen over here. That's why we gotta back up our law enforcement and just thank for the, because they're, they're the first line of fire, some of them are, they're there first. So again, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else? We move on. Report of city officials, presentations, resolutions. Let me make this comment. For the last week, I've been trying to finish my caseloads of the year, cases that I've had before the election. And as I made, mentioned at the square in ceremony and the inaugural dress, if you want to call it that, I'm trying the best that I can to lessen my caseload and put it on some of the other lawyers who work along with me. I take this job very seriously. I've taken it very seriously the last four years. I thank the staff, the directors, for assisting, but again, it's my full responsibility as mayor of the city of Blue Island to do what I have to do as mayor. Again, let's think back. Mayor Hart, Mayor Withers, Mayor Rita, Mayor Pulloquin, and now myself, we have the same rights. They haven't been taken off, but responsibilities and duties are the same. We have ordinances stating what rights, what duties, what responsibilities I have as mayor. Again, if it's not there, it's in the Illinois compiled statutes, and you can read it. And my responsibility as mayor is to do what I have to do for the best of the city of Blue Island. I've taken an oath, as well as all of you aldermen, have taken oath, to serve the city of Blue Island, and not whatever interest that I have or you have, that our main interest is the city of Blue Island. You as citizens, people who are watching us, are our boss, and I'm here to serve you, and that's what we're gonna do. Let me tell you what had happened. Even though I was, been in a very busy trial schedule, I just arrived from Morris, Illinois, on trial, last week, again, I had the honor to be, participate in the Woodyard School Career Day. I've done it throughout the grammar schools around Blue Island. And last week, last Monday, I attended the Woodyard School Career Day and met with probably six different classes, groups of children. And again, just to see their eyes as to what could possibly happen, what their dreams can be fulfilled, it's unimaginable what, what the feeling is and what to see them. I also, some people also know I participated for the Fit for Life, which is the race. I was there at the end to see that, who were the winners of that, over there for School District 130. And again, that is a phenomenal event from School District 130, to get everybody fit in the city, the youth, our future. And again, I repeat, our future. With the city attorneys here, we also had a meeting, wanted many to come with some of our other current issues. Spring is here, summer's coming, events, we wanna be proactive as to what safety, what mechanisms our police department, our public health and safety departments can assist for future events that are coming up in the future in Blue Island. Again, unfortunately, what happened in Manchester last night, those are things, even though we're a small city, we are a city, we are vulnerable, and we have to be aware of our surroundings, all of us. And I repeat, all of us. And yesterday, as I did it last year, I had the honor to work at White Castle. It's National Hamburger Month, and I worked there for, for an hour with the staff. And again, what a great experience to work the pickup window, the counter, and prepare some of the food with gloves and sanitation stuff. So we did that. So again, those are things that I've done this past week, will continue to be very active. So you know, this position is not just a ceremonial position, it's a work position. I'm the one who's gonna get blamed for everything, okay? So I need to get in there and do what I have to do. The same way that I'm requesting our city treasurer to be actively involved once all the books are finally in order, his responsibility as treasurer, what the state law requires and demands of him, I'm demanding of him, and I'm demanding of our city clerk the same way. Whatever duties and responsibilities he has, they have to do. We all work for the city of Blue Island, and that's what we're gonna have to do. As a result of that, and I'm letting the aldermen know here in the public, on May the 11th, I issued an order, and it was directed to the directors, and I'm gonna repeat it, effective immediately, no director of the city of Blue Island will transfer a city employee from one city position to another without my knowledge and consent. Additionally, no city director will terminate any city employee's employment without my knowledge and consent, and this includes all non-union employees, also known as at-will employees. Within the next couple weeks, I mentioned it at, at the inauguration, I'm gonna be reviewing every single position in the city of Blue Island, from the clerk's office to the directors, including the attorneys, and we're gonna evaluate everybody's position. It's time for appointments, and it's time for setting committees, chairs, and members. And that is my responsibility as mayor, and I will do that within the next couple weeks and I will inform everyone here in open when it's done. I don't need texts, I don't need visits at my home or at my parents' home as to how I'm gonna avoid uncertain things to make ourselves clear. I will do what I have to do, and I will do it. City clerk, any other business?
There's no bids, Your Honor. I have several other things that we need to discuss.
Go ahead.
First, the vehicle stickers do go on sale next Tuesday, and the van goes up this Friday, so we will be open on Saturdays through the month of June from eight to noon for vehicle sticker sales, as well as during the week. The first item of business, I need a motion to approve a request from MDA to grant the Blue Island firefighters to hold a fill-the-boo tag day ratifying the May 19th days of improvement, June 23rd, July 28th, and August 23rd at the intersections, 127th and Kenzie, 119th and Western, and Vermont and West.
A motion by Alderman, second by Alderman, Pulos. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Next?
The motion to approve a request from District 130 Public Schools to hold their annual block party on May 30th, 2017, from 11:15 a.m. to 2:15 p.m. They were requesting the use of maple napkin between High and Union to be blocked out.
We have a motion by Alderman Ossling, we have a second by Alderman Holly. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next?
A motion to approve a request from Access Blue Island Community Center to host their summer community health fair on July 29th, 2017, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m.
We have a motion by Alderman, second by Alderman Thompson. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Next, I need a motion to approve a request from Blue Island Church of Christ to have their annual vacation Bible school from June 19th to June 23rd, from 9:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
Got a motion by Alderman Rita, second by Alderman Ossling. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next?
Next, I need a motion to approve a request from St. John's Church to have their St. John's Fest on Saturday, September 16th, from 9 a.m. until 2 p.m., or excuse me, from 2 p.m. to 11 p.m. Street closing would be 8 a.m. for setup on New York Street from Western to Gregory.
Now, I need a motion by Alderman Viera, second by Alderman Holly. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next?
Next, I need a motion to approve a request from Bethel Pentecostal Church to have their annual interbies last pit date on Saturday, July 15th, 2017, from 11 a.m. to 2 p.m.
Got a motion by Alderman Viera, second by Alderman Holly. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next?
We have a motion to approve a request from Church to have their blessing of the motorcycle service on June 11th, 2017, at 10:15 a.m.
Got a motion by Alderman Carr, we have a second by Alderman Rita. Any questions? Roll call, please. Let me, last question.
Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Epstein.
Epstein. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Ten ayes, one abstention, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Next?
We have a motion to approve a request from St. John's Church to hold its 180th annual feast and carnival starting on Wednesday, August 2nd through Sunday, August 6th. Feast date mass will start at 10 a.m. on Sunday, August 6th, 2017.
Got a motion by Alderman Rita, second by Alderman Viera. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next?
And last. Motion to approve a request from Tom Mantell to have a block party on May 28th from 1 p.m. to 9 p.m.
Got a motion by Alderman Pittman, second by Alderman Ossling. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Epstein.
Holly, Epstein. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Ten ayes and one abstention.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
That's it.
City treasurer. Yes, Your Honor. Two items on the treasurer's business. First thing, reconciliation of the bounties of the counts. All the aldermen have gotten a copy of your motion to accept at the end of the month of April 30th, 2017.
We got a motion, do we have a second?
Roll call.
By Alderman Holly? Roll call, please.
Who's the second?
Who's the first?
Well?
I move.
You move first, then Pulos.
Okay, Pulos, second, okay. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Epstein.
Fernwald, Epstein. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Ten ayes and one abstention, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anything else?
The second item is to be under concern, a grant. This second or third year, we've applied for it for cutting grass, trimming, and demolishing properties, mainly cutting grass and covering a lot of expenses. If there's any questions of the council, I apologize under the circumstances, they go through all the process, but through the time constraint, not, I know you might have heard this before, but Jason can explain basically that it's up to you to make this, the corporate authority make the decision to accept the grant or deny the grant, and if it goes through tomorrow, then it's gonna be handled in downtown.
Let me make this comment before we make any motion on it. It's vital, given the complaints that we've got in the administration, that certain things haven't been taken care of, again, this is needed to address the high grass and certain abandoned properties and other issues regarding building maintenance. So I'm requesting that you approve it, and we move on. Do we have a motion by Alderman Ossling, second by Alderman Rita?
I make a motion to table it.
Okay. Well, we got a motion, abstention, counsel?
Which one was, you can't have.
Well, she made the motion to approve.
I made the motion for, yeah. I made the motion to accept. What was the abstention? She wants the motion to table, she wants a motion to approve.
Do we have a second on the motion to approve? Motion Alderman Viera? Next? Roll call.
Whoever made the motion first?
They made the motion. John Ossling, Alderman Ossling. Roll call.
I got a question.
Yes.
With, I know what it, what it is, the grant for the grass cutting, but is there any way to put the pressure on the real estate companies and banks that own these properties, so that the properties that's really, nobody owns and things of that nature, where it can be more concentrated on, instead of, you know, burning our grant up with doing those things and trying to, you know, fight these guys who own these properties for so long, and there's just nothing really being done about it, you know, let's just say physically that we could see. And there's just nothing really being done about it, you know, let's just say physically that we could see.
Well, you know what, then I'm going to put the pressure on the city attorneys to do the legal thing what needs to be done, in that respect. But I need it to be done, to take care of business.
Exactly.
Okay? So, we got a motion, we got a second. Roll call. Go ahead, partner.
Anderson, shouldn't this have gone through the finance committee?
I, like I said, through time constraint, and because the finance committee, for whatever reason, would have been.
Whatever reason, it was not brought to the finance committee?
So, I'll leave it up to the council, if you want or not.
I made a motion.
She made a motion, we got a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
No.
Rita, no. Holly, aye. Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hosling.
Aye.
Hosling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Like the Epstein.
Epstein. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
No.
Slattery, no. Pullos.
I abstained. I don't know if I, I feel like I'm not.
What's the ball? Six, seven?
That's why I take the motion, because it was not brought through a finance, the finance committee, it was not brought to.
Pass it. City clerk, what's the final tally?
Seven, two, and two. Seven ayes, two noes, and two abstentions.
Thank you very much. Move on.
Okay. Normally, I keep myself quiet and refrain comments of the public, but this time I feel I have to make a comment. Four years ago, the city was in disarray financially and structurally of organization and validity of a brain of business. The city has to be run as a business. There's money coming in, money coming out. We were $2 million in the hole on average. And I'm not going to be any accountant or give you exact figures of right now, but everybody was aware that we had professional consultants come in to give us information, to guide us. And again, under the treasure, as the mayor stated, I feel responsible. So, whatever has to be done to keep the city afloat, without putting blame and throwing stones, the city is functioning right now, or was for the three years. Very simple. If you want to make a business run, you do what you have to do under professional consultants. And sometimes, it hurts to do certain things. You don't like to do certain things, but sometimes you have to make those hard decisions. People that throw stones first, it's not good. Okay? If you're sitting in other people's shoes making decisions, and people are coming, always asking you, and then I'll bring up another thing. In the three and a half years, only a few people have called my office and says, "I was this on him, wasn't it?" Or have called, even, I think even the chairman of finance. If you have concerns, bring them up to the proper channel and get a proper response, rather than just come to City Council and throwing stones. Very rarely do I speak up. But if this hurts, thank you.
Anything else? City attorney, any business? Committee reports, committee development committee.
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Finance committee?
No report.
Thank you. Public health and safety committee?
No report, Your Honor. And I'd like to say, I'm a little concerned that committees haven't been appointed, because we do have some pressing business under public safety that we need to take care of.
We will do my best to make the list. In fact, I'm ready to make the list. I have it. But again, I'll bring it up at the next city council meeting. Anything else?
No.
Thank you. Municipal services committee? No report. Judiciary committee?
Yes, Your Honor. We met on May 4th, when he was called to order at 7:07 p.m. Present were Alderman Holly, Pullos, and Slattery. Absent were Alderman Frosto and Vaya. Also present were returning Trico and Mark Miller. There was no public comment. We considered six different handicap restriction ordinances. All of them were recommended by staff to be approved. All of them were motioned and seconded by various different members of the committee. I just would like to do one motion to approve the handicap parking only at 2233 West 121st Place, 2200 West Grove Street, 2433 Oak Street, 2033 High Street, 2100 York Street, Unit 1R, and 2729 West Groome Wall Street, within the city of Blue Island, County of Cook, State of Illinois, and providing penalties for the violation thereof.
We got one motion. Do we have a second by Alderman Pittman? Did you raise your hand? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hosling.
Aye.
Hosling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pullos.
Aye.
Pullos, aye. All a yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you.
There's also an ordinance rescinding handicap parking restrictions at 2056 119th Place in the city of Blue Island, County of Cook, and State of Illinois. I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
We got a motion. Do we have a second by Alderman Hosling? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hosling.
Aye.
Hosling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pullos.
Aye.
Pullos, aye. All a yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Also concern were two damage claims, 2017, 2305, and 2017, 14504. Both were recommended by council to deny the claim. Both were moved and seconded to deny the claim. I'd like to make that in the form of a motion to deny both of those claims.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Any second? More than Carr. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hosling.
Aye.
Hosling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pullos.
Aye.
Pullos, aye. All a yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
There being no further business, it was moved by Alderman Pullos and seconded by Alderman Slattery to adjourn. All were in favor. The meeting was adjourned at 7:45. The next meeting will be announced and posted at City Hall.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any Aldermanic announcements or comments?
If I may.
Alderman, go ahead.
Just as the new member of the city council, I want to thank everyone from the city and everyone up here who's very warmly welcomed me and offered all kinds of help, which I probably will need. And I'm going to be in a bit of a learning curve here, so I don't expect to be too vocal or active for a little bit anyway. But I do want to express my appreciation and also wanted to just say that, as, you know, my whole reason for running for Alderman was to help build a better Blue Island. And so, everything that I do will be run through that basic filter. If you see me do something and you wonder why, you can probably answer the question, "I thought it was the best thing for Blue Island." And I just want to note, I abstained on the first item of the treasurer's report simply because I hadn't seen the report, and perhaps through my own omission, but I won't vote on something that I'm not fully aware of. So, thank you very much.
Alderman Rita? Oh, let me, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just want to thank everybody who came out on Sunday to help with the planters uptown. Randy and Marshall Hoiser, Bill and Paulette Farrenwald, Sarah and Carly Brown, Diane Jacobson, Earl Summers, Christine, Holly, Marisol Barrera, Tom Mantell, and Val Keough, who did the design for the planter and also took care of ordering and making sure everything got here on time. So, thank you to everyone.
Again, I want to thank you on behalf of the city. Again, job well done, and you've done it for many, many years, and hopefully many more years to come. Alderman?
I would like to welcome our new Alderman here. And also, I wanted to make a point that the reason why I voted no was not against the grant, because we need the grant, but because it did not go through the proper committee. Nor was there a phone call made, and nobody reached out.